Pretty crazy time here in Stark County, Plain Township, Canton Township, Canton City. And our goal here is to share with you simply what we've already discussed during public work session probably about two months ago where we had the Pro Football Hall of Fame come in along with IRG as well, just some initial individual meetings. And when I say individual meetings, we each had one meeting with the Hall, I think with the exception of trustee Sabo. The other meetings happened, I think, just before the initial concept hit the press. Essentially, in the initial meeting, we were simply told what the Hall of Fame was looking to do and that, hey, this process was very fluid. There were a lot of unknowns. So for the sake of framing this, there haven't been a significant number of behind doors, closed meetings, handshake, hoodwinked deals, which I'm simply saying that because we're getting this in phone calls that we're receiving as trustees, that our township administrators, our department heads are receiving. So to further frame this, there are obviously multiple entities that are involved here. From a Plain Township perspective, what we have responsibility, oversight, and control of are zoning. So from a land use management and planning, we have infrastructure, so roadways, whether that's maintenance, drainage issues. We also have interworkings with the other political jurisdictions regarding, you know, annexations and so forth, because that's where obviously we represent you as Plain Township residents. We'll touch on through some of our department heads, some of the concerns that we have already raised as a board to the Hall of Fame, IRG, and the other political subdivisions on safety service delivery as well as roadway infrastructure maintenance and things moving forward. So that being said, first official thing I need to do is just open our meeting here. It is 6:05 and I'll call and order this work session of the Plain Township Board of Trustees. Do I have a second discussion, roll call? Lisa Campbell will do the follow-up, the resolution, appoint you as fiscal officer pro temp.
Okay. Trustee Lena?
Yes.
Trustee Hawes?
Yes.
Trustee Sabo?
Yes.
Okay. As a formality, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Lisa Campbell as fiscal officer pro temp for the sake of recording the meeting notes.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Lena?
Yes.
Trustee Hawes?
Yes.
Trustee Sabo?
Yes.
Again, so the public's aware, and this isn't for the sake of just this meeting, this is what your board of trustees does for every meeting, whether it's a work session or a meeting. This is recorded. So just be aware of that. That being said, from a framing this aspect, I'm going to say broad level, the topics we have to cover that we have responsibility for. Safety service delivery, that's a combination of our fire, police, and EMS. Obviously, the fire EMS is coordinated and overseen by our chief, Don Snyder, down here to my right, to your left. The roadway infrastructure questions and so forth, we have our highway superintendent, Mr. Joe Isino, to my right, your left. Just general administrative, we have your township administrator, Ms. Lisa Campbell. And then obviously as a board, have fellow member, Mr. Alino, have fellow member, Mr. John Sabo. We have our law director, Mr. Eric Williams. We have our parks community outreach director, Mr. Rob Steiner. And then we have zoning plan and development director, Tom Ferrara. As far as to get this started, you know, one of our biggest concerns out of the multiple is this project is very fluid, is obviously how do we ensure... Sorry, guys, I forgot How do we continue to ensure smooth safety service delivery? Obviously, with where this station is located, as close as it is to the proposed Hall of Fame Village, and some of the work that happens through automatic and mutual aid agreements the township has with the city, we're working to address that. I'll have our chief ultimately speak to that here in a little bit more detail, as well as when some of those questions come up. As well, the roadway infrastructure, I know there's been questions, there's been comments on certain roadways, where's the borders stop based upon what's proposed, what's known, you know, what property does the Hall have, what are they looking to acquire, and then, you know, what do they have access to? And lastly, what might they want later, but yet at this point, they have not communicated any interest. And I believe most of you were able to pick up a map as you come in, and that's going to help illustrate that. The Hall and IRG have been open on the design format with the board, with the public, and honestly, to the degree in which we know, everything's been shared through the repository. And there have been a number of different public sessions, pardon me. So if you haven't been able to come to any of those, we'll be more than happy to speak to that. Guys, what else can I miss in it? Just try and frame this in for the sake of our residents before we... Is there anything either of you have? And actually, the one last thing, we'll touch on annexation. The one thing I can clearly tell you, and this was again stated during a public work session in which all Plain Township or any county residents were welcome to attend Township Hall, the Hall of Fame has an agreement with the city of Canton, whatever properties they acquire for the village project will ultimately end up annexed into the city of Canton. Now, as far as those properties that are acquired, those are all private party real estate transactions. That is not something that we are privy to outside of being able to jump on the auditor site or look at the real estate section, the same as everyone here in this room can do. The board has no means legally or personally of helping influence or make those transactions happen. We as a board have went on record and told representatives from the city of Canton that, you know, outside of the property that they acquire, as they looked to annex it into the footprint, the township is not going to fight that based upon the proposed plan. What we will absolutely fight is anybody that is, you know, being pushed to have the property annexed in and doesn't want that, we're going to continue to stand up and fight for that. But as well, anything that's outside of the identified footprint, this board will contest every annexation, just as we have historically, even with our prior township trustee, Mr. Geovasis, when he was on board. So that being said, I'm going to open this up first.
The residents here can go online, you can go online at plaintownship.com and actually watch the video from that meeting with Dave Baker and...
Stu Littner.
Stu Littner and the representatives from the Hall of Fame, and watch that meeting. If you go on plaintownship.com and click on the top where it says trustees, and then on meeting minutes, and then you'll have to go to the year 2015, and that meeting was December 8th of 2015, and you can actually watch the video of that meeting because we video all our meetings. So you can see the Hall of Fame's presentation to the board and the residents that were there that day, the question and answers, the maps they put up, and all of that. So it'll be as if you were at that meeting. So if you have any difficulties when you get online, kind of walking through that, don't hesitate to call the township Hall, who can walk you through that. So that might help after this meeting is over. If you think, oh, I wish I would have asked, or I wish I could have seen that meeting, you actually can go back and see that meeting.
And the one thing, if we do get questions here tonight, we don't have the answer, we will be taking those back to the Hall of Fame to get. We did ask them to see if they could have a representative here tonight. However, there's the huge Canton Regional Chamber of Commerce dinner tonight, to which obviously the topic is going to be football, to which Dallas Cowboys owner Jerry Jones is in town. So unfortunately, they were not able to have a representative here, but they did ask, obviously, if there were any questions prior to, that they be submitted, so they could provide us with responses to that. So be patient with us, should we not have an immediate answer to your question, because we will take that back to the Hall to give clarification on that. It's our responsibility to communicate what we know, not what we can speculate or potentially perceive. We're strictly here to talk about the facts of what are known. So that being said, I know we've got a question in the back. I'm going to bring the mic out.
What happens when the football Hall of Fame gets 51% of the property?
Sir, please state your name and address.
Oh, Frank Kirsten Slater, 2409 19th Street Northwest. Sorry about that. What happens when the Hall of Fame acquires 51% and they want to annex it into the city? Where does that put the people that do not want to go into the city?
Well, first of all, and Eric, just correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody can't hear this, I'll be more than willing to grab the mic.
With respect to the city annexing, any property that they legally acquire and they have ownership to, they have the right to have that annexed. Now, as far as for the remainder of properties they can't annex, anything that they do not own.
What I'm saying is, okay, they acquire 51%, and then they go, and then they say, well, we're going to put it on the ballot or something like that, okay?
Right. I understand your question.
That's the point, what I'm saying. At that point, they're going to try and annex them.
Well, sir, I'm going to get it back to our law director here, but legally, they can annex any property that they own. And what you're getting at is the regular annexation procedure, where if they have 51%, they can bring in folks against their will, should they meet the statutory requirements. That's what you're asking about. And you're right, that can happen. However, I would say...
Can, from can.
Can, C-A-N. What I would say about that is, that goes in front of the Stark County Commissioners. And just based on the turnout here tonight, that matters. If those people that don't want to be annexed show up at that hearing, and they have to have a hearing if it's a regular annexation, which is what you're referring to, and they're vocal, and they talk about it, those kinds of things, you have the opportunity to oppose it, to oppose that annexation proceeding. And if the numbers are real close, I've seen that go both ways. Can I tell you how it'll go? No, I can't. But I can tell you that you've got a real good shot if you show up in droves as the people that are against it. And the law in Ohio also includes now the half mile around the area that's being sought to be annexed, so you can get those people in as well. And if you oppose it, I think you've got a decent shot. In a situation like that, if the... And I can't speak for the board, but what has been done in the past is that they have kind of spearheaded that effort against the annexation. And I've handled dozens of those myself. So you're right, that 51% is a bear, and that's what the law says. But it does matter if you show up and oppose it.
So it's one mile, you say?
Half mile. Half mile around the area. They take all of that into consideration, those in and within a half mile around. The annexation area, once it's defined.
Next to the... If everybody, before you speak, you need to state your name and your address for the record.
Kiara Moore, 2306 Blake Avenue. What if all the houses on Blake are already bought and you choose not to buy? Well, eminent domain, take your home.
I have a feeling I'd be popular here tonight. The eminent domain only exists for a political subdivision with a government. The Hall of Fame does not have the power of eminent domain. So there's no procedure whereby the Hall of Fame decides, well, we own this property and we want the one next to it, so we're just going to take it. That procedure does not exist under Ohio law.
And they acquire it through the city or anything like that?
No, I understand the thought of that, but you... The city, this is not a city project per se. When you talk about the Hall of Fame development, that's not a governmental project. The only way for the government to exercise eminent domain is if they demonstrate that they have a necessity, a government necessity, to take that land. This is not a government project. They would not be able to demonstrate a government necessity.
Even though they put money into it?
Yeah, that doesn't matter. It's still the Hall of Fame. It's not the city union.
We will ask that if everybody has the opportunity to speak, that you raise your hand before, just interject, interject, and that way we ensure everybody has the opportunity to...
Christine Gandro, I live at 1931 Barone Avenue in Hurst West. Last few days, I've come home to find digging on my property. I've been not told anything. They came in past five feet on my property today, put up a pole on my backyard, prohibited my gate usage of my fence. I was informed that they are going up further, they are going to be digging up the roads. I need to know, have you been told what they're doing in the area? What's going to happen in my area? We've been targeted first. AEP came out on Christmas, New Year's Eve, and they were taking pictures of the area, and they were telling us that, he told me that we are the targeted area to be the parking lot. But they are taking our property, they're going to, you know, buy it, do like what they've been trying to do. So these planes that are shown here do not make any sense. So what I'm concerned about is, is how much more am I going to come home and find what's being projected to you guys as to what they are doing with the streets right now? You know, how much are they tearing up and things like that? Because we've been told absolutely nothing. And my area is the area that's got all the utilities marked out. They're going to put the pole up, they're digging and everything else, and there's signs up stating about detours, that they said that they are coming into the yards because they're going to have to do stuff. We have no idea when, where, what's the next phase. They told me that there will be more coming for the next three months. So I just, I need to know, what can we expect to our properties? Because, I mean, first thing was the trees. I know my neighbor across from me complained that they did not take his tree because it's in the center of his yard. But what I'm concerned about is, how much digging are you going to do now? And how long is this going to go on? And what is this, you know, I understand that they're telling me today that this is to put more utilities in, to put a new fiber optics and everything, that they're going to tear up everything. Well, don't I have the right to know that it's my property before they can come in and do this? I mean, there's been no discussion.
...
And I mean, I'm coming home and finding these things I can't come to into my property yesterday because it's blocked off. I mean, we would like to know, if you could find out, when is this all going to take place? How is this going to happen? How much of us are we going to be teared up, tore up, blocked out of our properties?
Any set of plans that we've received from ADP is all the workers being done in either the right of way or in an easement, which might be on your property. They have that right to work there, just like they do when they come and butcher trees throughout everybody's neighborhood. They don't need the city permission. They get a permit through us to, to digging into right of way. And all the only thing we got right now, they were changing poles. The bear pulls up because they're moving some of the fiber optic lines and some of the other ones.
I never had a, there was never any poles in my back. And they're putting more up the street. They're laying out on the ground. What I'm just kind of wondering is, is what have they discussed with you other than ADP? Because there's East Ohio Gas coming, there's the phone company coming next, and all these other things. So what's going to be happening? And in phases, I mean, I would, I think, you know, the whole thing is, is I understand this is going forward, but we need to know what to expect, I mean, when it's coming out.
Some of the flags you're seeing are each utility come out in Mark, and so the other utilities or whoever's going to dig, it doesn't hit. I have not gotten anything from Dominion East Ohio or anybody else for any work in that area.
Okay, then, from the street in, this is my other question, how far are they allowed to come in?
Usually, it's probably a 50-foot right of way on 19th Street, so they're about 25 feet from the center line.
I'm on 20th and, I'm on 20, back there on 20th.
Yeah, there is, so Broad's up there. So it'll be 25 feet from the center line more than...
Okay, then what are the signs up for?
These four signs are for Canton City's replacing water lines along West Morland on the north side of Fulton.
No, they're right in my front yard. It says Lakeside.
Yeah. Next week, they're going to be boring underneath Fulton Road from Lakeside to West Morland. So Lakeside will be closed, back to Enfield, so they're rerouting the traffic down toward like the 20th Street for, this is about a 3-day project.
Okay, just have one more question. So what is the next phase that you're aware of that they're coming out to do? So I can know and be prepared. Because coming home from work and finding this is just not a good way to go.
Joe, just to clarify, I mean, realistically, outside the utility companies applying for a permit, we have no means of really knowing that.
Okay, I didn't know.
In advance, is there anything for like, utilities commissioner or anything like that, that our residents can take a look at that site?
Because neither project is connected to each other.
They're separate.
They're two different, the water line, we have all that. The power lines, all we were told was new telephone poles to hold this new power outage cables and move some lines. So on everything we've seen from the Hall of Fame, and so far, they were never going that far on any annexation.
You're speaking to my department.
So, Eric and Joe, do they have a project manager there? I mean, really, our residents, really, if any information that, right now, they should be surprised. I had people yesterday cutting trees in my backyard, I didn't know. And I mean, I took offense to that. So I didn't know that they were going to show up. They were cutting up for the column, but they're in my yard, surprised when you're cutting them. So how can we, how can we let our residents know if the power company, water company, so that they know there's going to be someone digging, even though it's right of way, which it is, and easements, they still have the right to know?
I mean, to come home and find out I can't get in my property and then to find it being tore up, they've drove over my asphalt, they broke it all up, so now I have nothing there. You know, and now you have these huge mound of dirt there that, hell, it's how it is, you know?
No, that's not right.
I will give your address and name and everything.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Before we leave, and I will, if they get any damage to your property, I'll...
I mean, it's just ridiculous.
What can we do for...
Project manager, the water department does, there's a project manager on that job. They can all know about the ADP.
I don't have any issue with the water thing because that's not coming up my way yet. But what I do have is that when you come home and find your property destroyed, and then you can't, you're no longer, oh, we're sorry, you put it in front of your gate, but that's how it's going to be, so you can't access your property now.
Yeah, I'll get all your, I'll make some footfalls.
What about the others? What are you supposed to do? Is she stuck in the zone?
No, it's going, it's going around the whole area.
Is there a way to be able to let them know it's coming?
I'll have to make some footfalls to ADP. I didn't know that they were going off route.
I was going to say, some of the immediate stuff, especially on the power companies, when there's tree trimming, typically the tree, the tree trimming companies that they contract with are supposed to come through, whether it's a door hanger or something like that.
They did.
That's the notification. And I mean, that's a contract between the utility company and the service provider.
It came out from ADP, it was a big yellow card. It said you had a blue dot, but the neighbor, they wanted to take his whole tree, and he fought it. You can't actually fight what they were going to do. What they did to me, though, is they put the phone pole right up in the center of my tree. The phone pole now is up the center of my tree. I took pictures so I can let you see.
Christine, spell your last name.
D-A-N, D-R-O-W.
P-R-O-W. Christine with a K or...
C-H-R, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We got the gentleman straight in the back, in front of the closed garage door, Joe.
Hi, Jay Shreve, C-H-E, Shreve, S-H-R-E-V-E, 1807 Clarendon Avenue. I know that when I bought my house, the people that lived there before and the neighbor next door, Joe told me that there was supposed to be a street basically running down the middle of the back of my property and Broad Avenue. And is that something that they could come along, even though I owned that property? I was told that there might be a right of way down through there. Did they ever come along and do something like that, put poles up down the middle of my back of my property? I mean, if they're going down the side of her yard there, that, I mean, that would totally destroy my yard. And everybody in that, on my block, basically, we have huge backyards because of this. And if they're, they come along and put power lines and poles down through there, I've got a tree that's probably 150 feet tall that's in my backyard.
It just can't go over the backyard, it has to be...
Well, do you have the, how long ago did you buy your house?
I bought my house in '09.
Do you have a packet of documents from the closing of that?
I do.
One of the things you can do tonight is go home and look at that and see what's on. There'll be a legal description in that packet of documents. You can pull that out. It's an aerial look of your property, and it has all of the easements listed on it, as well as it should be in your title documents, title insurance documents. That'll tell you what's back there, who's allowed to be back there. So that's a starting point, anyway.
Because I know my front yard does have, it's like a five-foot easement for utilities and roads and stuff like that. But I just, I never worried about it until she mentioned them just putting poles up in the middle of our yard.
That's where I, that's where I would start, because that's going to tell you who's got the right to be back there, and then you can figure out if you need to be worried or not.
And then beyond that, if you look at, Mr. Shreve, if you look at those documents and have difficulty with it, do you have a pen to write down the number?
I do.
You're going to call the Stark County Recorder's Office?
Okay.
At 451-7433, and they can help look up those documents to determine what you have in your backyard.
Thank you.
Let's turn on a second round.
Dan Pallola.
Will you spell that last name?
Delik Victor, I-L-L-E-L-L-A.
That's a fun last name to say, just so you know.
2407 21st Street. My question is, at what time do they have an ordinance for sound on working at the Hall? Two weeks ago, they had some boring, or not boring, a impact machine for the stadium going till after midnight on a Tuesday night.
Well, they were hall...
It was in the stadium?
Oh, yeah.
But that's going to be, that's in the city of Canton. So we can't enforce our noise ordinance in the city of Canton.
But the noise is rolling right up the hill in my house.
You're speaking my language. Our noise ordinance is, it's a bear. It's one of those tough things to enforce. But it absolutely cannot go into the city of Canton and cease the noise there. You can always call the city of Canton police. You can always call the city of Canton police. It could be, it could be considered a, you know, a nuisance, a disorderly conduct even. And I mean, going on after midnight, I agree with that, that's completely unreasonable. But for me, I call the city of Canton police department.
Okay. What about all the dirt from the dump trucks running up and down the street and everything else and dust in my house?
What was it, dirt on our, is there dirt all over the roads?
There's dirt in the roads, yes.
That issue Joe and I can handle.
I've met with a gentleman running the job for Wealthy and a few times after receiving some phone calls about trucks coming up and down through the neighborhood. Especially since they started building the ball fields down on Helen and Harrison there. We came to an agreement that all that truck traffic for those fields was either on 13th Street, Helen Street, and not north of 17th Street. I've received a couple of phone calls since then and called him, and every once in a while they get a rogue driver is what he told me that goes through the neighborhood. So I've been kind of sitting out in the neighborhood over the last couple of days. I mean, I can only sit there for so long, and I haven't seen any this week.
I have. You can watch the trucks in and out, men trucks, dump trucks, everything else, straight up the bar to the over.
Well, when they originally started this project, we didn't want, they wanted to use Blake Avenue and we wouldn't let them. So the reason they use Bar Avenue, a lot of those homes are already owned by the Hall of Fame, even though residents are living in a lot of those homes. So we told them to use Bar Avenue for the travel, because we didn't have any choice. They were going to use something, so. And it was less impact on our residents who still live in the area, being that those are all owned mostly by the Hall of Fame, those homes on Bar Avenue. And I did see them sweeping the streets several times in the area with a vaquette sweeper.
Yeah.
First Thursday. First Thursday. I could talk to them about that, to tell them. If they are going back into streets, I'll give them a call tomorrow. They're not supposed to be driving on any of the streets that I'm in township right now.
They came up 21st, look at the dirt tracks coming up 21st with all the big trucks. Right up 21st, I don't know how far I'll be.
All the way to Broad.
I will give them a call tomorrow to make sure that, that they're not supposed to be. They know that.
But what about all the other sides of the road? I mean, I understand they had to work, but.
They could be spraying some fields down or whatever.
It's got to be that dirty, you know, with the wind down right up the road.
Sure, sure.
When they start tearing the houses down, my house, we're really going to be dirty.
I'll talk to them about it, see what kind of answer I can give for you, and I'll give you a call. I want to get your phone numbers, okay, before we do. Amen.
If Joe has asked to get your phone number, he's not going to remember everybody, so please stay after the meeting, okay?
We're going to have, residents, you're, you're going to have to help us. If, you know, if, if they're driving on 21st Street, we don't know that, we're going to need the calls. And we're going to have to go after, we're going to tell them, look, this isn't part of your deal. Because honestly, I'm tired that, that we're getting disrespected. I'm telling you right now, I feel, and I don't care if it's in the paper or not, I feel we're being disrespected from the Hall of Fame. This isn't supposed to be happening. We need, we need you to call us. If they're, if they're on 21st Street and they're driving there, they're not supposed to be on 21st.
Yeah, that initial project that they were talking about, that they were going to be working on, isn't even close to that neighborhood. So I don't know why they're using those streets. Absolutely. And, and, and they promised us that they would not use those streets. So, but we, we do need to hear from you.
54 trips between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM the one day.
On, on which?
On Clarendon Avenue.
Claire?
When they turned on Scott. That was just between 7:00 and 9:00, and then I had to leave. 54 trips, and they went up and down the whole day. The next day, we did not have water.
Can you do us a favor and before you leave?
Oh, I was on the phone to Al yesterday when one big construction truck came up the road, and I told him, hey, Al.
I don't want Al on the phone.
I don't need a microphone, because it pisses me off.
Teddy, can I have your address, please?
2112 Clarendon Avenue Northwest.
And is it, spell your last name?
C O A T E S. It's my mother's house. She's probably the second longest living resident in that area in 64 years.
You said 54 trips?
54 trips between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. I happened to reach the head construction guy from the Hall of Fame, and he was, happened to be out at the Denver playoff game. And I had him in the airport, and I asked him if he had a shower that morning. And he said yes, and I said, good, because I can't.
Well, that was back when they hit the water line on Harrison Avenue, when the water went out?
Oh, no, this was when they busted four places down here on Woodward Avenue, because they took all those trips. Woodward and up Clarendon. Woodward and up Clarendon.
We had no waters. None of it.
They're sneaking around here like you wouldn't believe. They're lying to you as bad as they're lying to all of us.
I've met with him since then about the truck traffic.
Kevin?
Jason, Wealthy, from Wealthy Corporation.
Okay, I'm talking about Kevin, the guy that heads it up from the Hall of Fame.
Kevin Shipwood?
Yes.
They're killing all the roofs.
Well, he, he's not out on the site when they're working. I, I, we were going to the contractor themselves, is who I'm dealing with. So that's just another third party that I don't want to get involved with.
The gentleman back with my end, as much as.
My name's Terry Grant. I live at 1811 Clearview Avenue. That's the west side of Clearview. Right now, the Hall of Fame is in the process of purchasing all of the property on the east side of Clearview, the, and over, the next block over on Blake. I've been told that the, the day after the Hall of Fame game is over, they're going to start construction in that area right across the street from my property. I want to know what the laws are, what the protections are against them blocking access to my property, against debris falling. I mean, we're talking about houses coming down, 100-foot tall oak trees coming down 40 feet from my house. So I, I need to know what laws or what protections we have to keep them from, you know, just being careless and doing damage to my property. Are they required to put up a fence around their construction area?
Sir, it's going to, it's going to depend on a couple of variables. I talked with the law director. One, you know, if this tree's being, trees being out historically, I mean, the, the tree trimming companies are going to be responsible for following OSHA guidelines. So if they would obviously create or cause any damage between the hall and or the service providers, they would be responsible ultimately for correcting what they fix. Now, as far as the demolition of properties itself, and I'm speaking, I'm speaking from some mixed experiences, some folks depend upon the distances. Contractors will fence off, fence off the areas so nobody can come into it while the work's being done. However, depend upon others, it may not necessarily fence off. However, whatever happens, if it causes damage to your personal property, it's going to be upon that entity, whether it's the service provider or whoever, to make you, make you hold, whether it's through an insurance claim, what, I mean, that's, as far as ordinances and so forth, we don't have any type of statutory authority in the township based upon Ohio Revise Code.
What about blocking access to a public road? Just what, my big fear is they're going to, with all these construction vehicles in it, and the things that tear down the houses and stuff, they're going to just park them on Clearview Avenue, and I'm not going to be able to get in and out of my property.
As far as Joe, Joe helped me on this one. Quite frankly, I mean, to be blocking off roads, I mean, for road vacations, stuff like that, there are permits and processes that have to be gone through in order to even do anything like that. Now, as far as, you know, say a utility company parking, you know, a cable spot or, you know, a tree trimming company parking a truck along the road, we're not going to have, we're not going to have a permit on that. That doesn't even happen in the cities where they can regulate down to a low, lower level or that. But if they're truly going to try to close a street, you know.
They didn't get permission through us, and we work closely to our, our services, and they always need access to those roads. So we're not going to let them close roads. They don't have access, even if you're seeing the West Morland project that's saying, "Close it." He has access to his, the equipment down there, Sharon has access to it. So even for the school, we will never let them shut a road.
Yeah, just one other comment. Last summer, the Hall of Fame took over the parking lot, in the high school plaza stadium parking lot, they did repave the whole thing. That's right next to my house, literally, within four feet of my house is the parking lot. They took an easement in the front of my property and built a five-foot by five-foot electrical box. The only way my wife and I found out they were doing it, we happened to be out in our front yard one day when they started coming over with the machinery, there wasn't any advance notice or anything. They just did it. They just said, well, we have the right to access that. And they dug a ditch three feet deep, five feet into my property and put in this electrical box.
Joe, does that, Joe, does that, that goes back to utilities with their easement or?
Yeah, they, they probably have an easement right there. I mean, I don't know if they're familiar with where the fence is, and there's a gate there. Because I did go over there that day, because we have drainage lines that run through that parking lot and talk to their contractor, because they put all these light poles up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just mention this because as other people said earlier, it, it, we're not getting all the information that they say, they tell you, they may be telling you they're giving us the information, but we're not getting it.
I, I think what he's getting out there is, is they're going to be coming in and taking part of our property and using it for electrical boxes, which by the way, I, I watched the whole thing, I live right across from the parking lot. I think that we should at least get some sort of two-week notice, hey, we're going to be here on these days, we're going to be digging a ditch, we're going to be putting a pole in, by the way, we're going to be blocking in your gate, we're going to move the gate for you because it's the responsible thing to do. I, I think that that's not unfair of a request to ask of, of these providers.
I, I agree. I don't think you're going to get anybody from this board to disagree on. I mean, the unfortunate part is, as you were just saying up here, they can do whatever they want within, within the easement. And unfortunately, I mean, that's stuff that, whether it's reported as part of the legal documentation, or it's something that, you know, the public utilities commission, you know, go somewhere to govern and regulate.
They have to apply for permits for all of this stuff. I mean, there's building permits, there's electrical permits. So when they're applying for the permits, it should be required that they at least let us know that they're going to be there.
Anything done on that parking lot and around that parking lot is through the city of Canton, or through Canton City Schools, to be honest with you.
But he's playing township.
We're playing township.
But we're the owner of the box, this is already an easement there. If they already have an easement there, they don't have to get a permit from us. Well, I'm not saying that, that they, they necessarily, because they easement, I understand the purpose of the easement is so that they can have access to utilities. But as part of the permit process, or at least as a common courtesy, when they go to get their permit, just to knock on the door and go, hey, it's two weeks.
I agree with you, a common courtesy. A lot of times, we find not that they're working, we provide their stuff. It happens all the time. We have 170 miles of road, and we only have 14 people to take care of and find a park, but we're all over this place. And when we find something, we, you know, we, we act, we, we don't always get a call. We don't always get a call.
My name is Brooke Camp, C A O B, 2306 Corribin. Kind of a comment, might be late in the ballgame, maybe too late, but maybe not for a property that's outside the footprint they've already decided to acquire. But when they go to upgrade utility, in particular electrical, if there could be something done to have them modernize and put that underground and do a lot less damage to the neighborhood. So they're talking about upgrading that backbone to heavier, in more foliage, and the poles get bigger and taller, yeah, they're taking, it requires more easement than what they have.
Cutting down the trees.
For future, and that takes care of any tree trimming issue and things like that. But outside of the current footprint, there could be any effort to do that. I know from experience, utility companies aren't required to permit their work, that's their work, they respect their own work inside their easement. But if you have any complaint about them, what we could do is play it to pod, and they will handle disputes, especially if they hear enough voices. And in particular, getting a notification that you're going to have somebody come on your property this day and age, you don't know who's coming on your property. So they're going to be dressed as a utility worker and not be, so there's a lot of, yeah, different aspects of the pliteness or plateness and whatnot.
Actually, the gentleman in black right there, the center, Joe.
Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Kirsten Slaker, 2409 19th Street Northwest. I noticed that they were surveying for the easement rights. Are they planning on widening the routes up around there in the neighborhood? I mean, this is going to have an impact on all of us.
Are you talking, are there specific streets you're referencing? Because I mean, from a, from the high-level conversation.
Well, here, here, Atwell was out there, there's surveyors, okay? They was, you know, where the road was, they were surveying where their right of way is, or the highway, if you want to expand it or what. So are they planning on?
I mean, as far as from the roadway.
No, 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 I mean, 19th Street they were on, Clearview they were on, Blake they were on. Are we going to have a surprise when they, they might say, okay, we're going to widen the road?
There are streets they can't. Well, one, those are, those are plain town, those are plain township streets. So the Hall of Fame, one, can't just come in and start widening. That's something that would have to be brought before the road superintendent in this board of trustees.
Well, I'm wondering if they have brought it and it hasn't been brought to our attention.
No, the only, the only thing.
That's what my concern is.
The only thing that's.
I don't like any surprises. Go ahead.
The only thing that's absolutely been brought up in discussion, and if everybody can please remain quiet, just so everybody can hear one another's talking, was the 62, 77 interchange, we all know how bad that is, let alone, you know, projected numbers into the future Hall of Fame villages they talk. That's a concern. So they've talked about, you know, ODOT pulling in, I think, by a year or two in, the study and the reevaluation on how that will be done. There has also been discussion on, do they ultimately have the traffic for the hall get off 13th Street and then come up and cut, cut back in? And that's based upon the premise, if they were to do away, I think with this, actually up here, this is how I recall, but, I mean, literally, that's the extent of the conversation unless anybody has brought anything up to Joe, and I know that stuff through the board, so.
I, I do know ODOT's still looking at the whole thing, whether they're going to revise that ramp there coming off 77 and 62, straight into the Hall of Fame entrance there, if you have the hands of length or 30 feet straight. I have not heard anything since we heard that last change when they said they're, they throwing out.
But in regards to your question, if, if your question means that you are asking about streets that are in plain township, the answer is no. We don't have any plans, we have any. we haven't even discussed it or looked at widening.
Okay, I wonder if they buy the houses and they get so many and then they say, well, we wanna take it, widen it.
Well, they would have to annex the street to do that, and.
Which they come to for us.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, it is a possibility, but again, they would have to, as they annex, they would also have to annex that infrastructure portion of that if they so choose. We have places all over in plain township where half the road is ours and half the road is another political subdivision because of that crazy irrational annexation mentality. So, uh, we don't know, we don't know what their plan is, we don't.
Okay, how about the sewers, if they're gonna improve the sewers, are they gonna be digging up the roads?
We don't, I mean, that, that's gonna be upon the sanitary department, that's on some committee, we oversee that's either the county or the county sanitary engineer, at which point they would ultimately, you know, have to notify.
All right, to answer the question on sanitary upgrades, one, the board does not know if there are gonna be any upgrades to that infrastructure, two, if they, if there were and it required the roadways to be open, assuming those are plain township roadways, it would be impacted, in that instance, we would be notified, as Joe's alluded to on a couple of the prior responses.
Well, the surveyors indicated that there could be improvements, okay?
Well, sir, that's a speculative comment, we're not gonna speak to that, we're gonna speak to what we know.
I understand, but I'm just asking if there's something that we haven't been notified by you.
No, I mean, every bit of information that this board has from day one has been shared with the public, whether it's through the quarterly newsletter, whether it's through the meeting minutes, that are available online, via video, through social media, through our partners at Canton Repository, the Akron Beacon, we absolutely communicate everything that we know. This board will not under any circumstance, and I mean absolutely zero, put any type of speculative comments out there, the only thing we're gonna publish is what is known as fact in detail.
Oh, one more thing.
Sir, we gotta, sir, sir, we're gonna allow somebody else to question, we'll come back to you after we cover a couple others.
You had mentioned earlier in the meeting that only government entities can annex property, well then you mentioned ODOT, now ODOT is a government property, correct?
No.
Because I remember, and, and this is from the last meeting that I went to at the hall, they were saying that if ODOT came through and they decided that they wanted to widen up Lake because of traffic flow, that they could do that.
They don't, they don't, they don't own Lake, so, no, they couldn't, no, they couldn't.
I think you're confusing annexation and eminent domain.
No, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, ODOT does have power of eminent domain.
They have, so they could come through in four years and decide that they wanted to widen, even if half the people on Lake didn't wanna sell, they could still come through.
That's not ODOT's road though.
It's our road.
ODOT, they can only do it where they are, if they're gonna expand a road, they're gonna do their roads, they're not gonna come into plain township and expand our roads.
So they won't come across Polk, once they get to the, the end of the exit on 77 South there, they won't continue across Lake to make it widen up.
No, they will not go on the plain township owned road.
They can widen Polk, no, because that's their road. Guys, if you're, if you're, Joe, we can get a bike over here.
Okay, I have a question, what you're saying is, is once they buy the properties, they become Canton City, if you've sold to them, correct, the house?
Not right away, not right away, just let me clarify what hap, what will happen. The hall can buy the property, they could sit on it, leave it in the township for a period of time, a conversation I had with Sam Sloman, who is the, um, he deals a lot with the annexations for the city of Canton, ultimately, the hall's gonna decide whether or not, hey, we annexes in a parcel at a time, or do we wait till we have all the parcels and then just do one fast annexation to which obviously at that point the board gets notification, and, you know, obviously, we can agree, allow it to move on, or we can contest it depending upon the parameters.
Now, the other part I have a good question is, okay, if they've gotten those properties and they're theirs, you're going to maintain the streets yourself then like you do in other areas that you have, that it's gonna stay plain township streets at this point or?
As long as the streets remain in plain township and they are not annexed in, yes, our road crew will continue to maintain that roadway.
Okay, and then when you were saying about the power lines, from the conversation that I had with the gentleman from A E P, because he had attended a meeting with them that was pushed up to do all this, they were not projecting to do this, they told me, until maybe June, they were going to start this, and then they came out and did this much earlier. What he was saying to me is that the property that's closer up to the existing Hall of Fame, they're intending to take those lines and all that stuff and put it underground because the Hall of Fame is not projecting that they want that stuff visible for many different reasons and due to the buildings, that is supposed to go underground, but the area that they're saying is going to be the parking lot area are still gonna have the poles, and that is, that, and the man today that was out there from the company that's from Evanston, Illinois, that's doing this now, moving the poles and putting up a new poles, he's saying the same thing, that that over there closer to the Hall of Fame is underground system and then everything is above, so that's why they're changing the poles in my area, like you said, and adding more poles, but he says the only areas that, and this is why I'm taking these two gentlemen's word about, because they are with the plans and doing it, is that they're saying that this is because of the unsightliness of the poles and that they don't wanna over there, and for safety factors, they were saying that they don't wanna have power going out or anything like that, but through this whole thing now, but you're still going to say that at this point in time, you're gonna maintain the road system and everything like it is, but what I'm concerned about is, is that, like they're saying, the truck traffic, Beaver Company ran one night from two o'clock in the afternoon till 11 o'clock at night, up and down Varad, from 17th and from Helen, they did that whole thing, and they're running all night, so this is what we're saying, I think, what we're all concerned about, our streets are not the greatest to begin with, and they're weakening them by all this traffic that's going on, then you have the construction traffic, and the whole thing is, is, are you gonna be responsible to pay, is plain township a tax payer's gonna have to end up footing the bill for this, and what I'm appalled about is that we're losing our tax base here by them coming in and being able to take this and do this, this is gonna really hurt plain township, because I mean, the money's not gonna go to us, it's to Canton City. I lived through the first thing of plain, of the Hall of Fame coming in and taking the city and making that the city, and McKinley, we all have that are older, I've lived here my entire life almost, so what I'm concerned about is, what can you do to stop all this tax money from leaving?
I think we've obviously got a number of points, and you bring up a number of legitimate fair concerns.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just taking it back, I mean, I'm just taking it back to the.
Bear with me, if I happen to not answer a question, feel more than free to bring it back up. As far as with respect to the tax base, and a conversation that I had had with Sam Sloman as it relates to the annexation, and I think I alluded to in my comment earlier on at the beginning of the meeting, you know, will annexations be contested, and realizing that the city of Canton took out a note or a bond to turn around and donate it to the project, project, we realize certain property is gonna be annexed in, I practice all of that because of my conversation with Mr. Sloman, he had asked, you know, outside of contesting it, is there anything you can do to help, help it go a little smoother, and what he had proposed to us, now, it's still up until we see the paperwork, you know, in air, would be to leave it within the town, within the township, which would mean in that situation, that tax base would stay whole with us now, if it gets annexed into the city of Canton, then absolutely, that tax base does fully, fully go away.
That's a shame.
But they're also gonna, at that point, if they're annexing all, all of that, they're taking the cost portion with them as well, so, does that, answer that as, this is what?
It's a shame, because it's future money leaving the township that really, this is theirs, and it's a shame, because, I mean, that's gonna affect everything, your fire, your police, everything, it's a big, that's a big chunk, and I think, you know, when they put in there, they don't even look at us as homeowners, we're 194 parcels is what they said we were, we're nothing to them, but I know we're something to you.
Yeah, if I, if I can, I wanna try to tackle this, I think at least the second point that I made sure I caught, caught on, and that was the roadway, and again, trustee Sebo and our road superintendent, Mr. Iacino, had attended a meeting where it highlighted what the round's gonna be, we've noted, you know, we'll go back on that, we will definitely force that issue because no different than it is with our safe concerns we have with our safety services and potential call volume that could end up in there, which our taxpayers are not gonna be subsidizing calls in the city of Canton project, when you just entrusted us with additional resources to add manpower, well, if we have to go the round of, you know, like they do with oil and gas, see if we can push their hand on road user maintenance agreement, then trust me, this board will absolutely, um, push that, it may be an uphill battle, but, you know, I know we've spoke outside of Joe monitoring and him being over here as late as today, we have already previously set stuff to our Star County Sheriff's deputies who we contract with to monitor some of that traffic, obviously, again, having finite resources, you know, they can only be so, so many places at one time, so, am I, that, was there a third point, because I think I've got two of them, but I, I just wanna be thorough, okay?
I just wanna know, is our law director involved in these meetings with the Hall of Fame?
Our law director, I think, whether it's been with Mr. Lino, myself, you know, the city of Canton.
I just wanna know, because they're lying, they're lying significantly, I wanna, I wanna see him catch them in lies.
The answer to your question is yes, he is actively in, in these, so, I believe, ma'am, did you have a question? Joe, did you?
The gentleman in the third row.
Okay, here, do you want me to bring this out to you?
Richard Dye, 1921 Claretton Avenue.
Richard Dye, and what's your address again?
1921 Claretton Avenue.
1921 Claretton Avenue.
You know, I'm looking at the map, and all these people are talking about this and that, and most of them are getting sold, those people that are complaining about the sewer and about the roads, and when they buy your property, they're gonna annex the whole, the boot of, so that means they're gonna widen the roads if they have to, or they're gonna close the roads, they're gonna fix the sewers, because we expect millions of people to see what they're gonna do. So I think most of the complaining is with the people that are gonna get sold, so why are they complaining? I wish I was over there on 19th and Lake.
Sir, I, I can't speak to that, I mean, whatever the city of Canton and the Hall of Fame do, if something is officially annexed into the city, into that Hall of Fame building, we have no legal control over, so.
I'm not gonna speak the fact.
Yeah. Right in the back.
Um, the city of Canton's already responsible for the sewers, because I pay that ridiculous bill every one day, like I say, um, but as far as like this fire department right here, if there's a house that's been annexed or, or houses across the street that have been annexed, and they catch fire, God forbid, does our tax dollars that are paying for the firemen that work here, are they responsible to go across the street and put that fire out?
Very good, very good question, that's fair, and outside of, I'll take a first pass and then I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Snyder, that's actually been, again, outside of the roadway, the infrastructure, this has been one of our highest levels of concern because all communities for the most part have what's called an automatic and or mutual aid, so dependent upon the proximity, based upon resources that are tied up, there's a potential that, yes, our staff through our taxpayers, that meaning everybody in this room, could end up subsidizing the cost of that, we've brought that up in front of IRG, the Hall of Fame, um, and we've made the argument that, listen, you know, this fire department will no longer be, longer be centrally located amongst our plain township constituents, which ultimately could impact response times and stuff, taking into account as well, some of the challenges the city of Canton has with some of their fire station closures, closures, you know, that ultimately multiplies or, uh, makes that impact all the bigger, but for a little further explanation, I'm gonna turn it over to our fire chief, Don Snyder.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, like Scott had mentioned, there is automatic and mutual aid that we do with almost every fire department that surrounds us or touches on our borders, uh, you know, currently in the past few months, we've actually added Canton Township, which that station's manned down on 12th Street here, uh, so, they actually come up with an automatic response up in this area too right now, so, along with the city of Canton, um, you know, regarding, you know, are we responsive as far as your question, if there's a house on fire that's actually in city, in the city, uh, and we're sitting, you know, two or 300 feet away from it or 500 feet away from it, are we gonna be responding to it? First of all, we're not just gonna automatically respond to it unless Canton calls us, and if Canton calls us, you know, on that automatic or mutual aid agreement that we have with a lot of fire departments throughout this county, we are gonna respond to it, likewise, if we call them, there's almost every fire, and I don't care what, what division it is in this county, whether it's Jackson, North Canton, Perry, Lane, uh, you know, throughout the, throughout the county, we all mutually and automatically each other, help each other out, you know, for a lot of reasons, so, are we gonna respond to that? Probably will, but it's only gonna be based on them calling us first, we're not just gonna pull out the door just because we see it, obviously, you know, again, you know, what's a life worth? Are we gonna sit here and watch a house burn or somebody trapped in that house? Would you want me to sit here and not go to that and respond that and lose a life? I, I don't think morally, you know, I can do that, you know, so, you know, we have to look at the laws, we have to look at the structure, we also look, have to look at, you know, what's benefiting this, this community as a whole, you know, in respect to those other fire departments, they're gonna give us, when we ask for responses and, and aid from them, they give it to us, and, and so we work closely together with all the fire departments that surround us, because at some point in time, we do owe each other, and, and so, there's nobody can sit around and say, any department in this county can say that, you know, we don't need aid from anybody, because they do, and so, you know, with those resources that are available, that we can respond and help us out, we're absolutely gonna call them in, and likewise with them, they're gonna be calling us, okay? So, uh, you know, we do that, again, with the automatic and mutual aid that we have set up in, in the system, and, uh, you know, we're, we're happy that we have that in place because that certainly helps not only us, but also you guys, ladies, even more serving the communities that, you know, that we're serving.
Right here, proper.
Tracy Roar, 2514 Claretton Avenue, first of all, I wanna thank all the trustees in the fire department for coming here and bringing the meeting to us. My question is, you had mentioned there's public meetings sessions for the Hall of Fame, and if we can stick together on, on the annexation, how do we find out when and where these meetings are held? I've never heard any of them.
Well, actually, can everybody hear me? I wanna make sure if you're what, if you're.
Your board, your board of trustees holds our meetings the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, 6:00 PM, on occasion, should we have a specific subject that we're looking to discuss, because of the amount of detail that's involved, we will hold a work session, those work sessions are typically held at 5:20, so how do you know about that outside of seeing, you know, it on the website, assuming you don't have a computer at home, um, it ends up in the newspaper on a regular basis, as far as what meetings are coming up, you just look and you'll see who's in the paper, just as I'm sure many of you are here because you saw it in the paper, so, you know, whether it's the paper, you know, I know even this ended up, I think, getting picked up on the radio, our press releases for our meetings and or work sessions go out to every media conduit within the, within the area, whether that's paper, radio, and then that's in addition to on our own website, social media, and all of that stuff, so, I mean, we try to cover every aspect, now, if you're looking to know what's on the agenda, I know that gets sent along. Now, if you're looking to know what's on the agenda, I know that gets sent along with the press releases, obviously due to finite space that the paper may have or the radio may have, talk through it, they're not going to cover the agenda. You can always call Township Hall at 330-492-4689. And our staff will be more than happy to let you know what's on the agenda, you know, just talking you through that. Or even in the situation of the work session where we did have the Hall of Fame, IRG, that went out through this exact process. And typically on the work session, it'll say Hall of Fame Village Project. It may not say who all the players are or something, but that's how that's communicated.
Are you referring to the annexation hearing?
I think she meant.
Is that what you are?
Even if the Hall of Fame debates, the Hall of Fame also has public meetings that we can attend.
They're a private entity. But if I understood a part of your question was about the annexation hearing itself.
We try to stick together.
By law, you will be notified by the agent for the petitioner, which would be the City of Canton private Sam Slime, that an annexation has been filed affecting your property. And it will give you notice of the time and date of the hearing that the commissioners have set. Does that make sense? So it goes out by ordinary mail and they have to do it within 10 days and filing the annexation petition. Commissioner's set to hearing, the petitioner then, or the agent for the annexation, typically a representative of the city, then has an obligation according to Ohio Revised Code to notify you, time, date, place, this is what's happening with regard to the annexation, that your property is a party. So you'll always know about that.
But when that starts happening, Eric, myself and Joe have gone door to door for annexations to notify residents to make sure that everybody's aware and that we're on the same page when, you know, we want everybody to show up to the commissioners' meeting. So I foresee those types of things to happen. Besides the notification that you get from the City of Canton, there was a big annexation that we went, it was 10 years ago. We went door to door in the neighborhood to notify, yeah, the dining and annexation, to notify the neighbors and the residents to make sure that they were aware in case they got the mail and didn't pay attention or threw it away. So we will get very involved in that process.
Lisa, can we use Nixol?
Not for that. They will not allow us for that. I don't know if you all are signed up for Nixol, which gives alerts to emergency situations in the township. You know, if there's a fire or an amber alert or a road closing or snow alerts. But we can't use Nixol for that. But it is a good thing to sign up for. You can go on the website at www.nixol.com. But again, when the annexations start, it'll be very active on our end, reaching out to you. But again, our website is www.planktownship.com. And then the number that Scott gave for the Township Hall is the number to call when you have that truck traffic coming down. And then I'll kind of be the conduit to relay it out to the folks in the Rose Department.
For those of you that don't know, Tracy, she just spoke. And two meetings ago, you came. She was the only person in the audience. And she stood up and started apologizing for what she was about to say. And it was about some concerns that her neighbors had over the Hall of Fame. And quite honestly, she's the one that actually initiated this. We've been talking all along about how we want to fight any battles with our residents in regards to what's going on with the Hall of Fame Village. And we weren't really sure what those battles were going to be. So we offered to have this meeting here. And we thought we were going to get 10 people. So first of all, I appreciate all you people coming. And what you've given us now are some examples of some of those battles that we're going to be fighting. And that's going to help us a little bit to know when we do have some of these meetings, what we're going to present. So my point is, you can thank Tracy for that. And we were, no, we were just happy you came to initiate this.
Your response, your willingness to come here, do some of the neighbors, you know.
Yeah, all your help and all the feedback I got after the meeting and everyone was being so great about having a meeting here with us. And then it just took walking to a few neighbors and it obviously spread because a lot of these people I never met or talked to. Again, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity.
My name is Don Severs, S-E-V-E-R-S. I live on 27 1121st Street. You know, as of now, you don't know where it's going to end or what it's going to end. Have they ever talked to you about a buffer that would protect who's ever left? You know, I mean, you don't want to be living in Plank Township and get screwed by them coming right up. Like, I'm not real close. I think I'm only one house off of Broad Avenue. But the people that say they come up to Claretton on one side or Clarendon on the other side, are they going to have a buffer that will protect these people? You know, some of our property values? I mean, we can be adversely affected, especially ones living right across the street from us. So I don't know if you've talked to them or has there been anything like that.
Don, if anybody can hear me, just let me know. With respect to the buffer, literally outside of the...
Outside of the graphic rendering that they provided to us, which I don't believe displayed any clear buffer, that would all be left ultimately up to Canton's land planning management, their equivalent of zoning. Because I'm answering this based upon the premise that that property is all annexed into the City of Canton. It falls under the City of Canton's jurisdiction, obviously, for any property setbacks, any buffers and stuff like that. And that's obviously where this type of turnout, the feedback, whether it's with your Board of Trustees, or it's with Canton City Council, or it's ringing the phones of, you know, their annexation, guy, Mr. Slime, or Mayor Mertesacker. And I mean, there's some great, there's some great public servants in the City of Canton that will be just as equally ultra-responsive to this. I mean, as much as we know, this is hitting hard in Plank Township. This is hitting hard in the City of Canton. This is having a major impact on a geography that's much bigger, you know, especially in the county and some of the surrounding area. So with respect to your question, are there any known buffers? We haven't seen it on the rendering. And anything that would be required would ultimately be handled by the City of Canton, given the assumption that all that property is annexed into the city.
It doesn't mean that we can't fight for residents. I put up a war battle. We all will. Now, they may say no to it, but at least I'd like to pull up fighting and say to my residents, we tried, but we got denied. We can throw it out. I'm writing all these little things down, you know, when it comes time. Hopefully, we have, we speak to the City of Canton later on because we have to worry about the outside perimeter of Plank Township and the city maybe taking Fulton Road. We got to worry about all of those things. That may be a time when we work with the City of Canton. And maybe those are tools for us to say, hey, we want a buffer for residents. We'll fight for you. But again.
I think people would want to, they wouldn't want to be a block out of their line of properties. And you're just a block away from Broad, you know, without the township fight or the rest of us left.
You don't worry looking at them. I mean, again.
Well, it's all legitimate concern and trust. If there's one thing this board's passionate about, I mean, it's honoring and protecting our residents. And I can tell you, I mean, the Hall, you know, even with everything that's going on, they're not looking to make enemies. They're wanting to try to find as much central ground. It may not seem like it based upon what information's been provided or what's perceived as the lack thereof right now. But I do know, you know, whether it was Dave Baker or Dave Monds or Kevin Shipwood, those guys want to know this information so they can adapt and adjust potentially some of these smaller things to them that are monumental to us. So again, that's why it's important we're able to have this work session and provide the takeaways. And ironically, I mean, they're going to be able to go out right online as soon as we get this uploaded, and they can watch this entire meeting. So, you know, the likelihood is, if you're getting contacted directly by the Hall of Fame, you know, maybe a couple of days after this meeting or a week or two, week or two out, it's probably going to be because, you know, of this work session. And, you know, if there's additional dialogue that comes out of that, that, you know, leaves questions or concerns that you feel the board needs to address or help provide guidance on, again, I encourage everybody in here, contact us. Contact us, you know, Township Hall. You know, during the day, we've got great department heads. We've got great staff. But as well, trustee Sebo, trustee Lino, myself, our contact information is readily available online, or if you call Township Hall, our staff will provide that. In the back?
Two parts. One, in regards to the buffer zone. I live right across the street from the school parking lot. And there was a huge tree that was right on the corner of the parking lot that they tore down in lieu of making the parking lot a little bit bigger, three feet. Besides that tree, the trees that they just tore down for the wetlands that were over behind the elementary school that's just down the road, I'm naked to the world now. I mean, 77 used to be something that I looked off through a little patch in between the trees and McKinley High School. But now it's all I can see out there. Do you know if they have any plans of putting any kind of trees along 77 to try and buffer some of that?
Honestly, I think the answer is what we know. We don't, we don't know what the answer to that is. And I would be willing to say, until all the construction's done, you know, whether it's final grading and final finish, we're not going to see any type of street skates. Again, that's something ODOT would realistically have to address as it deals with Fulton Road and 77.
And then two, do you know, have they notified you of any plans for any kind of parking lots in the area?
There's been absolutely nothing. I mean, outside of the village plan and the buildings, I think one of them may contain an underground parking area. That's as close to additional parking as been.
Because after the Hall of Fame game last year, the parking lot across the street was just a disaster. And it took them two days before they had threw out there. And I actually called the Hall to complain about all of the dirt and papers and trash before they had somebody out there cleaning it up.
A lot of your questions, that's off the school property. Everything where the ball fields are going in down there, Don Scott, the school, the little school that sits on Clarendon there at 17th Street. And the wetlands, I think, I'm not sure if they were owned by the school, but I do know they went through the Department of Natural Resources before they were able to do any of that work there. And I know they have to replace whatever, how much land that they are doing, they have to replace that wetland somewhere else. So the parking lots, the tree you were talking about on Clarendon at the edge of Park was inside the school property because we had to check that out. And that's all answers for Canton City. Our Board can't answer questions about somebody else's property, not even Canton City's, but Canton City's school board property.
What other questions do we have?
Tracy Roar, I just had one more. You know, during this week of Hall of Fame, since I live right across from here, Mr. Slime, you know, this becomes the hub. They ride golf carts. Everyone sets up your command center. So if this does join forces with the village, it's going to be even a bigger, sure, daily setup like that for the residents if we're still stuck living across from this, if you're maintaining the whole village.
About two years ago, maybe even three years ago, that took place for many years here. This station being the hub as far as law enforcement and IR EMS has changed. They moved a lot of that command post and that command center to Canton Station Ford, 25th and Cleveland. So this station no longer serves with the sheriff's office, their command post. What we do bring in is the county hazmat team. And so that county hazmat team, their trailer, their trucks sit on the property, the premises, and they bring golf carts in. Because they actually do air monitoring throughout that whole stadium. And we're using some of our resources here to plug in the power to monitor those atmospheric monitors in case there is a chemical release in the area. So there's some behind the scenes that are going on there. But that's primarily what that station's, the station's being used for now. And that command center has actually been moved over to Canton Station Ford. So.
And it will stay that way with the village going, or will it kind of Canton join you?
I would imagine, because they've done some infrastructure there to maintain that command center and added some more resources into that building to make a more stable command center there. So I don't see that leaving in the future.
I have a question. Hold on. 130 acres across the street here. We park cars there every time our church has a function. We give that to the children with a Bible. Now, will I be, will I continue to be able to charge for them to park there to give them money to our church?
As long as you own the property, and you have the legal right to do what you want with that. The township cannot control that. The Hall of Fame Village cannot control that. So that would still be what I would consider business as normal in that situation.
Can I have your name and address?
Ruth Ward, 2618 Cleveland Avenue, 3921.
2618, and it's Ruth's last name.
You can also put down she's a 70-year resident in that house. Obviously, we want to be cognizant of everybody's concerns on this. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this topic? Yeah.
ALAMROWE, 2132 Clarendon. I asked them when they had their big meeting, what was going on with the parking in the area? Because quite often this area becomes a parking lot. And they said, we're talking to you guys. Because I've seen, I have seen Clarendon become a one-way parking lot between 21st and Fulton. I mean, nobody moves. The traffic just sits. You can't get anybody going either way.
I'll have Joe dress that.
During the three days of the Hall of Fame, festivals, the game and then Chime and everything, we've worked a lot with our sheriff's department and our fire EMS about posting no parking signs. I mean, there's some permanent no parking signs up to this day from Fawcett Stadium. And we've put temporary no parking signs up through this whole area from 17th to Fulton and from George Alice all the way to Broad and even part of 20th Street, I believe, down to Demington. We've been doing that. I've been here 25 years. I know we've been doing it that long. Our Board passes resolutions for that. Now, if somebody's parking on those roads, that would be the sheriff's department's call about getting through.
We have markings on our street, our block, our one block marked for Fawcett Stadium, no parking for Fawcett Stadium events. They did not mark our block for no parking during a Hall of Fame event. And I got the first ticket in my life for parking on my own street in front of my own home. Nothing was going on at the time and no messages were on our street for no parking. The next block had it. I was looking for it and I didn't see it. I thought, thanks for my shopping trip, I got a parking ticket. Parked in front of my own home. There is no Fawcett Stadium event going. There's a sign on the property next to mine, no parking for Fawcett Stadium events. There was nothing going on at Fawcett Stadium.
So this wasn't during the three days of the Hall of Fame?
No, this... No, this, this is when they were going to ring the bell.
PNC, yeah, and it was actually at the Hall of Fame steps, where they opened the stock market several years ago.
They rang the bell on the steps of the, that day, and there was nothing going on at the stadium, but I got a parking ticket.
Our law director, our sheriff, approved the public's answer.
Unfortunately, we don't have a answer, obviously, on that one. If there ever is a ticket that's issued by the sheriff's department as it relates to Township, contact Township Hall, and we'll triage through that. And it'll either end up waived, or it'll stay in force depending upon what the circumstances are. But yeah, obviously, that's a goofy situation, so.
I think maybe one of your neighbors got a ticket during the Hall of Fame and wiped out the date and just put it on. That's why I just called the Hall.
You know what, actually.
Oh, my gosh, I think it was.
I've got, I've got a representative from the sheriff's office here. If you ever get a ticket like that, and you're not sure what's going on, by all means, you can call out and ask us, and we'll explain it to you. Unless you have the copy of the ticket with you, I could take a look at it and try to figure out if it, could have been something unrelated in how you were parked that maybe wasn't in agreement, maybe a neighbor called. It's hard to say without being in that particular circumstance and see why they gave you that ticket. But don't hesitate to call your questions. We make mistakes just like everybody else. Call and ask us if you're not sure.
He says, there it is right there.
All right, back here. Is there anybody else in closing with any other questions? Yeah, actually, for anybody who didn't, wasn't able to get a copy of the map.
We can get ours out of here.
We have a couple up in front of the table as well. We'll make sure that's posted online. Or if you just contact Township Hall, we'll make sure we get that mailed out to you. Any, any other questions? Well, guys, we do appreciate the fact of your sincere interest. I know there's obviously some unknowns. This is going to continue to be a very fluid process, so be patient with us. Your board is not, it's not our intent to hide any information. You know, we're here to address any speculation. We're here to provide the details that we know are known facts. So please, keep these, keep this number in mind, 330-492-4689. That's your Plank Township Hall. If you don't feel you're getting enough detail, for some reason out of our staff, ask for the trustees' information. It's published out online, but our staff will be more than happy to get you our contact information. So you can email us, you can call us, or whatever it is. We all pride ourselves on speed of response, so.
Oh, yes.
That being said, if I can get a motion to, or I'll make a motion to adjourn this work session at 7:35 PM. Mr. Lino with the second, do I have a further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino? Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Be adjourned.